Morning, everyone. This morning is the Town Council regular meeting, Wednesday, June 2, 2021, and it's finally at the Town Hall green room. It feels good to see everybody finally in person. We will now stand and do the pledge.
Through the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, before we get to item number two, we need to make an amendment, look for a motion to amend the agenda to add the Clinton Town Council awards that will be given out this morning to two Morgan students.
To move.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Thank you. Okay, so this morning, we will be handing out two, what they're calling is the Clinton Town Council Award. This was previously done with the Clinton Board of Selectmen. They used to give this award out to two students at Morgan, one male, one female. And this year, the faculty, and how this all plays out is the faculty selects the two students that have excelled in academics, have been a good citizen in school and within the community, and have shown student involvement while attending Morgan. We are proud to announce that the two students for the 2020, 2021 Town Council Award goes to Ryan Inglis and Alexandra Wolf. Ryan has been involved in football and baseball throughout his years. He is a member of the National Honor Society, React, and involved in the Police Youth Group. He will be attending St. Anselm in the fall and majoring in Criminal Justice. Alex has been on the field hockey team throughout her Morgan years. She too is a member of the National Honor Society and the Spanish Honor Society. Alex will be attending WPI in the fall for biomedical engineering. Congratulations both. If you guys would like to say a couple of words, not going to push you to it, but if you'd like to say a couple of words. If not, we have two checks here that if you guys want to come up one at a time, we'll just take a picture handing you the checks. So it's up to you if you'd like to say anything.
That's fine. No problem.
Thank you, Ryan. All right. You guys want to come up and then we'll hand you your checks. Let me take a quick picture. Yeah, you want to do the whole council?
Yeah.
Okay, can we have the whole council come up, please?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Take a picture.
She's done, I'll take one.
I figured you guys wanted to go there. You'll get up to me again. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. All right, now we can move on to number two visitors. So at this time, are there any visitors that would like to be recognized?
Good morning. My name's Chris Pisante. I put a presentation in front of you pamphlet, I think we sent it ahead of time. We're also going to have it up on the board there. I also have a formal proposal that I'll give to you during the Q and A. But basically, what Sarah Alletta and myself are here for, you can switch to the next slide, is to propose to the Town Council, and thank you for having us here today. We wanted to propose to you a new Clinton Human Rights Commission. And so, my name's Chris Pisante. I'm a member of Board of Ed, Park and Rec. I know most of you guys. I'm involved with the town in general and really involved in youth. Sarah, you want to introduce yourself?
Sure. Hi, everybody. I'm Sarah Alletta. I also know a few of you. I graduated from Morgan, class of 2020. I stuck around another year because of COVID, did school remotely, and I'm involved in Partners in Community and the offices over in the annex. So that's me.
So you can switch to the next slide. So before we get started, just in general, the way that we ended up coming here today. So, human rights, I think, is something that everyone can mostly get behind, I would think. And what, you know, as a lot of you know, I have a 23-year-old daughter. And what I've just generally witnessed in Clinton is that this topic tends to be reactive. And what I mean by that is that something happens, that people perceive one way or the other, people lash out, make comments, this or that. And what I've always said to my kids and to other people that I've worked with in the community is, do something about it ahead of time, be proactive, do things the right way. There's a way to do things to, as we're here today, to try to go through the council, set things up, get feedback, work together. And then, in the future, when things happen, there's a whole thing that's set up and set up the right way. So that's really how I came along. There's, you know, Sarah, as she said, is involved from more that youth perspective that my daughter's talking about, where, you know, I give her so much credit, where she is a smart young lady coming together to be a leader, to try to present to you today. So that's sort of the background of how we got here today. So, I'll turn it over to Sarah and let you sort of present for a while, and I'll interject from here.
Sure. So just some informational slides. So we are the Clinton Human Rights Initiative, and we're basically just concerned volunteers in Clinton. And we're just asking for, you can click next, and next, and one more. There we go. So the acceptance of all of the people, just simply human rights. I won't read all of those, but those and more, so just no matter who you are, that you have basic human rights in Clinton. Yep. So we're just a group of concerned businesspeople, parents, teachers, all of the above. And so we're proposing that a Human Rights Commission be established in Clinton, Connecticut. And it would be primarily for educational purposes and then also as an advisory board. This is important because Clinton's minority populations are small, but they're growing and they are significant. We need to ensure that we have a welcoming and supportive environment for everybody. And people who may feel excluded from the population can be small, but they, of course, are still there. So we want to make sure to include them. And our town supports this message, and we ought to make it known with this commission. So across Connecticut, especially across the shoreline, Guilford has one of these commissions. So there is support for this idea. And can we afford such a commission? Yes. There really are not any costs associated with this, maybe a few administrative expenses. And then we also hope to have an International Human Rights Day celebration in the town of Clinton, but this would, of course, be covered completely by sponsorships of local community organizations. And so what exactly would the commission do? It would serve as an advisory capacity, including carrying out projects and research that benefit the town's residents and also community leaders. It would cooperate with different agencies, businesses, private, civic, religious, and other organizations in Clinton. And it would also recommend programs that can help our residents enjoy equality of opportunity in this lovely community. It would also help secure equality of treatment and opportunity for all human beings, as previously stated, advise people on the appropriate departments or agencies to contact within the town, and it would respond to relevant needs when and if they arise within the town of Clinton. The responsibilities of the commission would be to offer its services to cooperate with other agencies and departments, including but not limited to all of these business, industrial, labor, other organizations and sectors of a healthy community. It would also recommend to the Town Council, if necessary, programs that would help all members of the community to enjoy equality that we've been talking about. It would engage in study and research and possibly publish reports designed to increase the understanding of human rights within the community, attend and participate in trainings relevant to the goals of the commission, so anything human rights. It would pursue community-wide education, and this is one of the foundational goals of the commission, basically just to educate the community, to encourage tolerance and acceptance and foster understanding in our community. And it would advise and recommend appropriate programs that are implemented with federal, state, town funds, all of those. So what would this look like? It would consist of seven members appointed by the Town Council for terms of three years, and they would meet monthly. Four members would be appointed for a term expiring on November 30 in odd-numbered years, and three members expiring on November 30 in even-numbered years, two non-voting student advisory members serving one year. And this is a commission representing a broad cross-section of the community regardless of political affiliation.
Thank you, Sarah. Yeah, so just to finish up, you know, in summary there, the one thing you'll notice that's not mentioned there is sort of a policing force or anything like that. That's not what this is. We're there to educate, advise, direct people in the right direction. And so, we did reach out to the town to just see what kind of support that was out there. And you can see there's a cross-section. We have local religious leaders, there's people from Kids Connection and local kids groups, you can go to the next page. Abby from the PTA. So there's a cross-section of support that we reached out to, just to see what the town thought of this. So it seems to me the town is behind it. This, Sarah can talk about what's going on inside of Morgan.
Sure. So you see up there on the left, a quote from Leslie Chasse, who I'm sure a few of you know, is an English teacher at Morgan's high school. She is also now the advisor for the new Social Justice Club at Morgan. So this is another thing that is being done across the shoreline at different high schools. But Morgan created a social justice club, and this was fueled by student inspiration, student initiative. And so if Morgan can do this, we can certainly do this at a town level. And so this is just another source of inspiration and support for the commission.
Next page. So I'll, at the end of this, of the Q and A, I'll hand out the written proposal, which is similar to this, but it just really summarizes everything that we're asking for. And really, with coming to the Town Council, you know, we tried to put a lot of thought, this is months of energy that we've all put into this. But with that said, you know, we come to you, if you have ideas or you want to have any suggestions, we're certainly open to it. And, but we wanted to do the legwork for you and sort of put as much of it down as we could in writing. So open it up to questions. Anybody have any questions or comments?
I do. First of all, thank you for doing this. Are there any compelling reasons why a community would not do this, number one? And then, number two, if I'm looking down here, race, ethnicity, nationality, how about class? I mean, Clinton has long suffered from incredible disparities in wealth in this community. Would you address any issues pertaining to class?
Absolutely. First of all, to your first question, we don't know why. And, you know, it certainly, to us, makes a lot of sense. It was just more to be organized and well-thought-out, and that's what we want, you know, I've seen personally in the past where that hasn't been the case. And secondly, absolutely. Any sort of human rights and class, that makes a lot of sense, Eric.
Anybody else?
Other questions?
Well, thank you again both for doing all of this. Actually, it does do a lot of the legwork for the council so that we do have something that we can kind of, you know, go back to review. As a council, obviously, this would be put on agendas going forward so that we can discuss it as a council, to find out how we put this together, the formation of it. So that's something that we will discuss as a council, Town Manager as well, and then put that on future agendas. So thank you very much again.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
All right, we now can move on to item number three, which is the approval of the minutes for May 19, 2021 meeting. Do we have a motion to approve? A second? Further conversation? All in favor? Opposed? Abstained? Thank you. Moving on now to number four, which is the appointments and reappointments. We'll just go through these one by one. Peggy Adler, unaffiliated Historic District Commissioner for a term until 6:30, 2026. Do we have a motion to reappoint?
Want to do them all at once, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, one by one. We'll just do them one by one.
Oh, do?
Yeah.
Do them one by one?
Individually, we'll do them, yeah.
All right, yeah, I'll beg you.
Okay. Do we have a second? Mark? Any further discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Abstained? Okay, thank you. Next up is John Clinton, Democrat Historic District Commissioner, alternate seat for term until 6:30, 2026. Motion to approve. Mark? Second. Eric? Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Thank you. Shelby Alletta, Republican Human Services Advisory Board for a term until 6:30, 2024. Mark? Second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Next, John Neary, Republican Housing Authority until June 30, 2026. Motion to approve?
So move.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Lawrence Pilcher, Republican Housing Authority until June 30, 2026. Motion to approve. Mark? Second. Eric? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Michelle Bailey, Democrat Human Services Advisory Board for a term until 6:30, 2024. Mark? Second. Eric? Further discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Opposed? Abstained? Thank you all. And now we'll move on to the poet laureate. So just so everybody knows, Patricia Barone has withdrawn her name from this, so she's no longer interested in being the poet laureate. So the three that we have to choose from, and we have all their information that we've gotten in these packages, are Kathy Weiss, Jody Kaplan, and Vanessa Haran. Does anybody have any motion to appoint one of these individuals? Eric?
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Kathy Weiss as our poet laureate.
Second.
Second. Is there any other further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Thank you all. Kathy, congratulations. Number five, Clinton, Summerfest and Fireworks Exception Request, Chapter 194, Article 111, 194-5A. Carl, do you want to just give us a little background on this one?
Paul is here.
Is Paul here? Oh, oh, sorry.
That's okay. Good morning. I'm Paul Arcini, Executive Director of the Chamber of Commerce. The Chamber is planning a Summerfest and Firework Celebration for Saturday, August 28, which will include full-day celebrations, including kids' activities, bands at both the beach and behind Town Hall. Additionally, behind Town Hall, we'd like to have a beer garden, similar to what we have in the past. And with that, the Charter, Chapter 194, addresses alcoholic beverages and loitering. Section 194.6 allows for exceptions for special events by the Town Council. Therefore, the Chamber of Commerce requests that the Board of Selectmen, I'm sorry, the Town Council, consider and approve an exception to Sections 194-4A and 194-5A for the Summerfest and Fireworks.
Do we have a motion?
So move.
Second, okay.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Opposed? Thank you, Paul. Abstained? Okay, thank you. Number six is the Homeland Security Grant Authorizing Resolution. We all have a copy of this. Carl, can you want to just?
Sure. This is part of the annual process. There's a, we have to pass a general resolution saying that we want to participate in a regional planning effort and then be the beneficiary of any of those dollars for homeland security. This is the process that's been in place for a number of years. The dollars used to flow to the local level, now they're decided at the regional level, which is part of, we're in Region Two for this part of the state. In terms of how these dollars come back to Clinton, most recently, the decision was made to buy some of those mobile message boards, which you may have seen in other communities. So Clinton will be receiving one of those. While it's a regional asset, it is positioned here and available for use in Clinton as we need it. So we have to do this annually. You did one last year, and we need another one to be done because now it's a new federal fiscal year.
Thank you. So at this point, we'll just look for a motion to approve the resolution authorizing execution of a memorandum of agreement for the federal fiscal year 2020 Homeland Security Grant Program, resolved that the Town Council, the town of Clinton, may enter into with and deliver to the State of Connecticut Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection, Division of Emergency Management and Homeland Security, any and all documents which it deems to be necessary or appropriate, and be it further resolved that Carl Kilduff, Town Manager of the Town of Clinton, is authorized and directed to execute and deliver any and all documents on behalf of the Town Council of the Town of Clinton, and to do and to perform all acts and things which he deems to be necessary or appropriate to carry out the terms of such documents, including but not limited to executing and delivering all agreements and documents contemplated by such documents. Motion to approve? A second? Tim? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Thank you. Item number seven, Council Discussion on Future Projects. Anybody have any comments on this? Yeah?
Yeah, I'd like to get an update on the Rocky Ledge. I've got a few emails recently about, and I know we had Matt Kennedy here recently. Carl, could you just give us a very, very brief overview of where we are and what we could do as a council to move this? I'm absolutely bewildered as to where our next steps might be.
Our next steps are funding. So it's a neighborhood where the intensity of development was to have well water and septic on small lots. There have been some issues with some of those lots. It's my understanding this was teed up originally to go for a bonding referendum, but then was pulled a number of years ago. So the project has been out there as a concept. It requires funding in order to move it forward. You're not going to get money from the water company because they cannot invest in speculation. The concept was to run a main down to provide water and then also provide the private connections, the laterals that go off, and then provide the water connection into the house, which makes it a little bit more expensive than just running a pipe down the road. There was a desire to get large-scale neighborhood interest and buy-in. I don't believe that that took place. I think there was some resistance to shifting over to paying a water bill versus a well bill. So it's a funding issue.
So what does that mean, that the water company won't invest in speculation?
They are prohibited by PURA to put a significant capital investment in it based on the speculation that people will connect.
Carl, if the majority of the homeowners of Rocky Ledge had signed an agreement to connect to the water pipe, would they then fund a certain portion of that?
It would start to change the flavor of the conversation and, I think, change what seems to have been the history here of deciding the funding piece of it. You just haven't had that receptivity on the neighbor's part.
Does anyone present? I assume people have, this has been presented to the homeowners of Rocky Ledge. Have they presented an economic cost-benefit? Obviously, it's a cost to connect, but the benefit to the homeowners, I think, for their resale value of the home, that's connected to city water versus a well, is significant. The value of their home will go up. I feel more than what it costs to connect.
I'm not sure that that was part of the conversation. I think it's really more looking at it in terms of a sewerage and health issue, less an economic issue. But if the council wants to go there, we would have to then, I just think, how to garner support from the homeowners.
I wasn't here the day that Matt Kennedy spoke. Did he touch on Rocky Ledge at all? Because there are specific phases to the facilities plan, Clinton's wastewater facilities plan that was proved by DEEP, and this was supposed to be the simplest, easiest way of meeting one of those phases. Did Matt give any sort of an update on Rocky Ledge, or?
There is no update to give because there is a bit of funding.
Well, I mean, did he touch on it at all?
I think he touched on it as a potential project, but again, it's still left to a funding decision.
I mean, it's a bad situation up there. I have looked at the files over at CRAD at the Health District, and people complain when their uphill neighbor does their laundry, their drinking water smells perfumed. It's a topic that definitely should be front and center, particularly for those poor residents. But it's the Water Pollution Commission's purview to explore that and bring it forward if they want to. Honestly, the last time this all came up for discussion, the water company was in the process of being sold. So they were reluctant to pin any sort of funding down, and it, they wouldn't commit to anything. And in the last year, two years, the water company has been sold, and now there isn't that personal, "we live in Clinton" approach to things. So, and I can certainly understand that speculation aspect of the proposal, but it is a necessary thing. If I lived there, I would be irate and wanting something to be done. But it is very expensive, and it's for not a great many houses. So, anyway. The good news is, though, that the horse farm brought water over to the horse farm, brought a water main over there, and they brought an oversized water main over there, which would really enhance this project if it were ever to pass, because that shortens the length of the distance that would have to be installed by the water company. Now it's there to a greater extent than it ever was before, so. Okay? I'm done.
Anybody else?
Just Pearson, I want to make sure we keep that on the radar. I believe there used to be a committee or a commission that was looking at that. Is there any sense in reconvening that group to move forward? I know Carl's doing some work for us right now, but.
Maybe waiting for the background that Carl provides to us, and, you know, finding out what's going to happen up in the state and, you know, what that whole situation will play out to, and then we can decide, obviously, you know, maybe convening a commission to discuss it. But again, at the end of the day, you know, we have to finish these steps first.
Mm-hmm, okay.
So. Anyone else? All right, thank you. Number eight, Chairman's Comments. I do not have any comments at this point, so we could just move on to the Town Manager's report.
You have my written report with you. So there's, at the COG meeting, there was a discussion that involved an initiative from UConn where they're trying to train students to help with stormwater management. from Yukon where they're trying to train students to help with stormwater management. The program would be, where if Clinton is selected, would be to look in our watershed for areas where you could divert stormwater runoff. It helps us comply with our stormwater discharge obligations under the State of Connecticut. And again, if we're that, one of those successful towns, it's a gateway to secure a small amount of financing to address a project that's recommended for improving stormwater management. The main focus of the Yukon Project this summer is not immediately within our area, but Clinton is pretty much the, the majority of Clinton is in the watershed that they're studying. They've locked up a number of towns to the west of us by having gone through the South Central COG. It was brought up at River COG, and Yukon now has to follow up with four of the towns that were interested in the program. I put Clinton up as potentially being interested because it's a bigger bang for the buck in Clinton since the majority of the town is in the watershed versus a place like Durham where there's only a small bit of the town that's in the watershed. So if that comes to pass, I'll certainly pass that along to the council to let you know. I wanted to spend some time on giving you a primer on the American Recovery Plan Act, which dovetails with Eric's question. This is federal stimulus dollars that came from the Biden Administration. Unlike other dollars which flowed previously, this has a direct allocation to local governments and direct allocation to local governments who are not HUD entitlement communities. So for a place like Clinton, the last time you got direct federal money was probably the Nixon Administration. So this is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to receive direct funding from the federal government. Right now, we're operating on what they're calling the interim final rules, which is issued by the Department of Treasury. So they aren't final, they're near-final, they're asking for input and comment. A lot of that input and comment is driven by trying to put a little bit of specificity to what Treasury has provided. So the reason why these funds were created, aside from trying to provide a stimulus for the economy, they're also meant to be a little bit longer-lived than the prior stimulus and longer-lived than the stimulus that was coming out of the 2008 recession. So the intent of the program is to lay a foundation for a strong, equitable economic recovery. The State of Connecticut is going to be receiving funds directly, along with a number of federal programs through the Small Business Administration and others. The discussion in terms of how the state is going to be spending its money is currently a debate in Hartford. The governor has issued his plan, the General Assembly has to issue theirs, and then negotiate towards the middle. So the point, what we know today is the funding going to cities and towns. Because Connecticut does not have a county layer of government, the towns would also get a county contribution. What those final dollars are is still in a state of flux. Treasury updated the local funding dollar amount, so the dollar amount for Clinton rose a little bit, but we have not seen what the county distribution is. So right now, for just the sake of math, it's a possible allocation of 3.7 million to Clinton to disperse towards economic recovery. So the general goal in a program like this is not just to spend it, it would be to be a little bit more strategic and think about long-term benefits to the town. I think what we've heard from our congressional delegation is to make sure that we're doing something that's impactful. So eligible fund, eligible projects, and this is kind of the nitty-gritty and also where there's a little bit of gray area that needs to be tightened up, which is why there's questions coming from Connecticut and municipalities across the country. So one of the areas of possible expenditure is support public health expenditures. This is looking at identifying a need or negative impact from COVID, and then how that potential use of funds would address the impact. So some of those expenses are services programs to contain and mitigate the spread of COVID. Given where we are timing-wise, we've kind of moved beyond that, but it could be used for other pandemic-related type costs. Services to address behavioral healthcare needs exacerbated by the pandemic, and payroll and benefits for, in this particular case, it would have been health-related staff. Funding does not go to CRADE under this program, it goes to each municipality, so it's up to the municipality to decide. Addressing the negative economic impacts caused by the pandemic, this is really more direct stimulus dollars. So again, you're doing that two-part test of looking at the connection between COVID and an economic harm or problem locally, and then how does the funding address the economic harm that was created by COVID. So it specifically called out tourism and hospitality sectors. You can well imagine, when we were in lockdown, you couldn't go anywhere, so tourism industries suffered some hits, along with hospitality. The recession that came out of COVID was more of a service-related recession than it was real estate or manufacturing. You can provide assistance to employees and their families, there can be direct support of small businesses, and then again, that direct support to the hardest-hit economic Additional categories, which are a little broader, replace lost public sector revenue. This is using the recovery funds to backfill budgets. It's part of the state's discussion. I know some of the bigger cities are looking at this to balance their budget based on bigger hits that they took that were not in play here in Clinton. Providing premium pay for essential workers, and then investing in water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure. Eligible uses, cannot be used directly or indirectly to offset a reduction in net tax revenue. Some clarity being asked for that point at this, right now. It cannot be used to put in a reserve or a rainy day fund. The intent is that the dollars be deployed and put on the street, not put in a bank account. To that end, it can't be used to make payments towards a pension fund, and you cannot use it as local match for a federal grant. So if you're going to secure a federal grant and it requires a match, you cannot use ARPA money, you have to use some other source of funds, local or whatnot. General guidance, so a lot of people were talking about, well, you can just do capital projects with it. Again, it's got to be run through that screen of what the pandemic impact was going to be. So in Treasury's own words, a general infrastructure project, for example, typically would not be included unless the project responded to a specific pandemic public health need or spent a specific negative economic impact. So again, it goes back to the two-part test of what was the negative impact and how are those dollars going to address it? So just buying a truck does not become an eligible use unless you can answer those questions first. The deadline to use the funding, it can be used to cover costs incurred by December 31, 2024. That has raised questions, because if you're going to do a major project and it requires state permitting, spending every dime by December 31, 2024 might be a challenge. So right now, the description is that it has to be obligated by December 31, 2024, but you have to have it completely spent by December 31, 2026, when the reporting period ends. So potential uses of these dollars that you could use locally under the services programs to contain the public health emergency. In this case, you could do two potential projects. One would be a public communication system that would work more robustly than the reverse 911. You could push information out via social media, text, cell calls, landline calls. You could do it within a specific geography, you could do it across the entire town. One of the areas that COVID brought to the fore was that non-English speakers were not necessarily getting the same message that English speakers were getting. Support for small businesses, again, trying to determine what the impact is to the Clinton economy. You could do a revolving loan program at a 0% interest rate. You could do a lease rebate where you're providing some degree of rental subsidy. The state is using some of its money for residential rental subsidy. This would be using it for business rental subsidy to help backfill some of the gaps in the downtown that closed during the pandemic period. Or hire an economic recovery coordinator to consult on economic development issues to help the town bounce back. That was an eligible use under the CARES Act, which was the prior stimulus program, but that never went to towns like Clinton. Speeding the recovery of tourism, travel, and hospitality sector, again, sort of those same tools, revolving loan fund and lease rebates. Regional marketing and promotion is something that's been discussed, but it really hasn't coalesced at this point for what the regional marketing effort would be to encourage tourism along the shoreline, or at least this part of the shoreline. Investing in water, sewer, and broadband, so this gives you two potential projects. One is Rocky Ledge, so you've got, on one side, you've got with private connections, this is running the laterals that go into individuals' basements. So the current cost estimate would be five and a half million. If you use all of the ARPA funds on that, it's only 3.7, which leaves 1.8 million to be financed. Without the private connections, that's basically just putting the pipe in the ground and then hoping the public connects. You're looking at a $3.2 million project, so that leaves you a balance of half a million in ARPA funds, which could be used elsewhere.
Can I just ask specifically on that one? The estimates, are these the old estimates from approximately six years ago?
These are updated estimates after having spoken with our engineer.
Okay. I know, just for your background information, the original estimates came in around 5 million, but when they came in, they were anticipating soils, soft soils, they were not looking at the rock ledge as well.
The number here is based on discussing the issue with Christie to update what were the prior cost estimates when the project was originally being discussed. The larger projects, again, because you've got a gap to fill, also assumes the cost of debt issuance, because the assumption is that you'll have bonding costs associated with filling the gap. There is no cost of issuance when you're doing, just putting the pipe in the ground because you still haven't, you haven't put any local contribution in.
And do you have any anticipation of conversations with Connecticut Water about those connections, what they have available for residents?
I've discussed that before, that they do not have the means to make financial contributions on speculative connection. They wanted to see stronger neighborhood support for it, so they're not going to fill 1.8. That was never in any kind of assumption in the past. So you still have a gap that has to be filled with some sort of local funding.
And then DPH, any program-wise in terms of the local funding, again, for connections? The program.
I have no idea what DPH is doing with their ARPA money, if they're going to get ARPA money. There's been no disclosure on that front.
This wouldn't necessarily be ARPA money, they had the low-interest loan funds available for the local residents. This is quite a while ago, maybe four years ago?
Putting together something as quick as I can because this is constantly evolving. If you want to pursue this as a project, that would get you more detail, but again, this is just to lay out the rough estimates of where you would go. I didn't do the similar math project for the downtown project. Originally, that had an estimate of between 4.7 and 5.2 million. If you roll those costs up to reflect current expenditures based on guidance from the engineer who put together the original estimates, it puts us closer to 6.3 to 6.9 million, which has exposure of 2.6 to 3.2 million as a balance for the town to fill. So I didn't put the math in there partly because of space, but also it has a much larger magnitude of local expenditure that has to be authorized. It's also a more complicated project because you've got to acquire a property that would receive sewage waste, and it becomes more problematic from a timeline to be, have those dollars spent by 2026, not knowing the X factor of how long it's going to take to secure a site, whether it's private negotiation eminent domain or what have you. There's further desire from other groups looking to get their, an allocation of some of this local money. So the COG has had conversations about doing a COG-level project or some sort of other regional project, looking for towns to contribute. There's also a push from the arts community to secure some funding to support arts programs. I'm having a conversation with them later this week to understand what their desires are. The rules specific to towns like Clinton that don't regularly receive HUD entitlement money, new guidance came out on that at the end of the week, last week, and there'll be a further conversation later this week for how towns like Clinton should be responding to their ARPA obligations or what restrictions may or may not be on us that would, if you're in a HUD entitlement community, you would have to deal with. So part of this is for your own edification, but also to get an indication of where you want to go project-wise. Last week, I was approached by, I guess, Representative Gupiel, Councilmember Gupiel, looking for me to fill out a form because the state was going to be vetting projects. So I don't want to put anything out there until at least the council has an awareness level of it, so that you're aware of the funding and where it could potentially go. So it's really more, this is where we're standing. There'll be more information by the end of this week, hopefully, for what it means for towns like Clinton, and then we can have a continued conversation for where you want to go with the funding.
That's it? That's all you got?
Yes, that's all I got.
Anybody have any other questions? Thank you, Carl. All right, we will now move on to liaison reports. Anyone? Nothing? All right. If we do not have any of those, then we'll move on to an adjournment. Motion to adjourn? Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Abstain? Thank you again, everyone. Good to see everybody in person. That's it? We didn't have to listen to Carl, we would have been out of here by like.